Okay.
Okay. Start with the budget.
.................................
So, call first.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Frederick.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee here.
Here.
Mayor Maren.
Here.
Important things to discuss.
All right, we got a couple sets of minutes to approve. Let's start with the March nineteenth, two thousand and eight special meeting budget workshop.
Make a motion to approve the minutes presented.
So moved.
A second, thank you. I don't know if we have any discussion, we've already approved this.
This one will approve?
We approved the budget.
We approved the budget, yeah.
Yeah, we just gotta approve the minutes of the meeting.
The minutes, yeah.
Okay. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Need a motion carry or to approve the minutes of village board meeting April second, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
At the second. This is the organizational meeting. As well as some... Talked about the budget, we approved that. Work. Uh, let's see what else did we do, new business?
Yeah, it was our regular meeting.
Microcracks up here. The franchise agreement, I think we've brought to oppose, thank you ladies. Old business, uh, there's some things I'll report to you on that. Is there any adjustments that need to be made here?
Nothing, I can say no.
Okay. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, general question period for members of the community. Well, let's go right into the report from the code enforcement officer.
You have my report. Um, sent out a few letters for junk trash and debris. Got some response, but tomorrow's the fifteenth, so I'm gonna go around Wednesday. Whichever ones I have issues with, they're gonna visit the court.
How are we gonna handle this, uh... This property down on, the old government property? Is it at the time?
Oh, okay, yeah, um... Yeah, I sent them a letter basically outlining our code as far as, uh... Abandoned buildings with broken windows and all that. And what it is, is obviously, they called back one time, I returned the call three times, I haven't gotten an answer from them. They seem to think that when the police arrested some kids for breaking the windows there, that part of the settlement was the kids replaced the windows. Well, that's not my issue, it's up to them to chase that, not me. Um, and since then, there's a lot more than been broken than what was done at the time. So, my suggestion is, is to the code that the village go ahead and have the windows boarded up. And send them the bill, if they don't pay it, it goes on their taxes, now they do pay their taxes there. I'm, I mean, just a rough guess, I'm figuring it's gonna be around five thousand dollars to do all those windows.
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna stop, I mean, if we leave them the way they are, there's gonna be another broken one next week and the week after.
And when you call them, can you leave a message?
I told them that in my last message that, that this board meeting, that decision was gonna be made.
And it was at the, it was in your letter as well as your call?
Yes, yes, and I sent them the, I sent them the code, everything, so they're, they're well aware of it.
The village Trump.
The old village.
On the other church street, yeah. So, I mean, we do have recourse there, you know, they, they live in the states here and they, they pay the taxes on the place, so... I mean, it take a while to get you, I mean, there's a timeframe where you have to reapply to the county or whatever for that, through the taxes.
Yes. Well, now, we would, whatever we invest in closing up that building, we would have to wait till next year to get...
Yeah, unless they pay for it, which...
Unless they pay for it, but I doubt very much that's gonna happen, but we can try. So, your recommendation is to?
My recommendation would be that we go ahead and get some pricing from a couple contractors to have the windows and the doors boarded up, so that it's inaccessible.
Okay, how's the board feel about this?
Agreed.
I totally agree.
It's getting very dangerous.
It's terrible. It's filled with pitches. Isn't there some parts of the foundation that are falling out as well?
It looks like along the bottom edge, a little bit, but not, not as bad as...
Not bad.
As the previous building down the arch.
I mean, eventually, it's gonna become an issue, but for the time being...
Well, it will become an issue if the pigeons continue to...
Oh, yeah, I mean, the glass is, the glass is broken going out onto the sidewalk, onto the grass, so...
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not kids breaking in anymore, it's the wind, the birds, everything else trying to get out.
All right, so tomorrow, we'll call a few contractors and see if we can get some, get some prices on here and get this moving forward.
Sounds good.
And, uh... Maybe we could make that decision or appoint someone, uh... Towards the end of this month, getting ahead of myself, but I'd like to have a special meeting on the twenty ninth?
Ninth, Tuesday, last Tuesday.
Okay. You gotta work that day? Tuesday the twenty ninth, can we meet at six o'clock? Do our year in business? No?
I don't know, yeah, probably.
Do our year in business, uh, we gotta have a public hearing for the charter deal.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have it at night. And we can also award a contract to board up that building.
Okay. Six o'clock?
If we can all make it, yeah, six or six thirty, whether you prefer it...
Well, since the weather's being nice, it's as...
It shouldn't take long.
Is that good with you?
Yeah, should be fine.
Okay, maybe?
Maybe?
All right. Okay, anything else, Mike?
You know, the other thing is, this afternoon, we checked on the property on Oak Street, and since we had that meeting, that was March, April, we met with him. He's not been back up there to do what he had agreed to, to the meeting. So, my thought was, I was gonna wait through this coming weekend, because by then, the grass will be needing to be cut. And he, he cut it last year, so if he comes up to cut the grass, I wanna see if he's gonna do anything with the building, and if not, I'm just gonna use the court.
Now, let's go, let's only go to Friday on this one.
Yeah, by the weekend.
Cause you're not here next week.
That's right, too, yes.
So, let's, let's get this, uh...
Okay.
I mean, he's, he's threatening a lawyer lawsuit harassment, but thus far, he's done nothing.
Which property are we?
The stone building on Oak Street.
That one, okay, well, we got two properties on Oak Street that have issues.
Well, the other one's got a demolition permit, that's what I mean.
Yeah, they're gonna, he's gonna start tearing that down there anytime now.
What's he gonna do with that?
Sell the lot.
Is he taking everything down, or is he leaving parts?
No, supposedly, he's taking everything.
Really? I thought it was gonna leave parts up there. Okay, that's fine.
You guys...
Go ahead.
What was the, uh... Possible chicken issue in the first shop or lot?
Two people called me about a chicken running around the parking lot one Saturday. So, I rode around in the back street looking, and I can't find the chicken.
Uh, I heard somebody posted on Facebook.
Well, one of them was a Canadian, and the comment I got was, "Only in America."
What's that one?
One of them was a Canadian, I don't know how they got my phone number, but they left me a message that says, "Only in America."
Blame of opportunity.
Yeah.
So, have us on yours?
So, I, I don't know where the chicken came from, where it went, I...
Yeah, main price shoppers move to fresh.
Yeah.
Really fresh.
Chicken.
Um, which, which property on Cedar Street is this concerning development of Cedar Street property? Met with Francis T. concerning development of Cedar Street property.
Okay, that's where, uh...
Apartment, I'm sorry, apartment.
Mark Eddie, or Mr. Eddie owned the garage.
Oh.
And then there was a house, I think, Bill Rai lived in. They sold, that, that house was loaded with garbage, and I happened to be down there the day that the woman who owned it was there, and she was taking care of it, anyway, that property's been sold and taken care of. But, yeah, there was garbage down, oh my god.
Um, where do we stand, too, with the end of Cedar Street, they cleaned up a little bit, there's two piles, and then there's a pile along the trail, um, that, I'm not sure who it belongs to.
Cherry, Cherry Street.
Cherry Street.
What did I say?
Cedar Street.
Cedar Street, Cherry, sorry.
Well, she called me when I, I sent her the letter, they were gonna clean it up as soon as the spring came.
They cleaned a little, I mean, but there's two definite piles, and then there's a pile that I don't know who it would belong to, but at the end of the parking lot of the Kimpek's building, of tires. Seems they removed some of them, but there's still tires there and junk, dumpage.
That might be the, that might be the Kimpek's people.
Uh, no, the Kimpek's, but you talking about the old Oak Atone building, that dead end road?
No, so, when the, the, how the trail starts up, you've got Champlin Elementary, the trail, and the parking lot. So, that little bit of wooded area where a lot of the trees have come down.
Right, right after the parking lot.
Yes, it's right there.
Back of the parking lot, where there's tra, tractor trailers and probably chilling on.
That might be Jerus that might have owned that one time, I mean, I don't know. I have to go see.
Yeah. I think it's probably Susie, Kimpek's, it's all, it was all flooded there, the water was just deep in there.
Yeah, washed out some of the, the trail in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It did.
That, that was my next question.
Well, yeah, when we get some business...
While, while we're on, while we're on that subject, so who's gonna repair that, who maintains? You've got that portion that's kind of in the village, it's through some washout, and you've got a post removed down by the bridge, which is in the town, so... Is that even turned over?
Still under the jurisdiction of state incoming.
Yeah, they have not turned it over yet.
Okay, so, is there a contact there to get those repairs made, or?
I've, I contacted Harry McManus about it.
Did you?
He shared it with the, with the county officials.
Yeah, cause obviously, they didn't grade it properly so the water could flow, you know, especially the beginning part of that trail where the most damage is done. Um, where you have that natural ravine that goes down to the drainage, it's kinda like they didn't continue that so the water could go, so when all that snow and ice came off of it, it kinda took it. It was long before we had the rain, this damage was happening with the ice and snow. And then, when you go up around the corner, and then you start going down the hill, as you know, that's all totally eaten away.
Because it wasn't high enough grade.
Right.
It's kinda like they, they fell by the wayside once, once they got around that second turn, and they're beautiful coming up the hill. They made that first turn, it was graded nice, and all of a sudden, it's just part of the...
They just quickly got it done.
It's level with the cornfield.
Yeah.
In some places, it's lower than the cornfield.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they watched through the cornfield, they, they dozed the corn over to do it. Yeah. It, it should've been at a, at a higher grade, the grade should've been above the, the cornfield, that's why it can't drain off, so it becomes, it becomes the drain.
I don't know, as far as I know, it's like you say, it still belongs to the county.
It does.
So...
Set some meds them along.
Yeah, cause that's a lot of money, taxpayer money, too, I know there's grant money involved, too, but that's a lot of money that went into that trail for things not to have been done properly, very similar to here.
It all comes back to the blacktopping of the tail, or leaving some of the...
It's like they fell, they fell, they fell down at the end, though. It's like, it's beautiful to hit at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, so, my, my list for later is that.
No, well, I haven't, I want to talk about it, you should talk about it.
No, it's great, it's very good.
Would it help if more of us contacted Harry about it?
He knows, oh, knows, I mean, I wouldn't hurt, but he definitely knows.
Anything else for Mike? Yeah. Didn't ever report last month, got a long one this one.
Ooh, lots of pages.
Lots of pages tonight.
The book, it's typed.
Always typed, if I can read it. All right, good evening and welcome to the May Village Board Meeting. This is the last regularly scheduled meeting of the village's fiscal year, our new year begins June first, as it does each year. As I have many times over the past three or four years, I would like to share some comments and concerns about the much anticipated and seemingly unending water project. As I have reported to you in the past, somewhat obsessively, some would claim, this has been a project beset with problems, the contractor, the engineers, our project partner, and ourselves all share the blame for this uncompleted experience. Hopefully, restoration relief is in sight, the town is looking at this situation and should have some sort of plan in place to attack the lingering issue. I am assured village areas that need restoring will get that attention, hopefully, to the satisfaction of affected land homeowners. Our DPW crew will not be involved with much of the restoration needed in the village, as this is a shared water project commitment, and it should be handled through remaining project funds. If our residents feel that they are not getting the attention to detail they were promised, I suggest they make a call to the town of Champlin office and relate their concerns. Again, the village will do all it can to make sure its residents are treated fairly in this regard. We have found that operating the new water service to the community is more expensive than we were led to believe. Chemical costs are higher, we are required by the health department to do more testing on water quality, utility costs are higher, and there are still areas of the filtration plant that need completion. We will need to purchase a larger emergency generator to meet the increased needs of running the system in case of an electrical outage, and this was not included in the project cost. Thus far, we in the village have not received any promised financial support for what is supposed to be a shared service. We are attempting to attain notice, not maintain, a way to discuss prevailing issues that we do not seem to be able to make much headway in this regard. As a result, as we discussed last month, we unfortunately have to increase water rates for the second time in three years. This will be an increase across the entire user base, both village and the town, of fifteen and a half percent. New water rates for the village will be five dollars and twenty-five cents per k-gal, up from the current rate of four dollars and fifty-four cents per thousand. On the average ten thousand gallon per quarter usage, this will increase the cost by seven dollars a quarter, or twenty-eight dollars annually. With the remaining service charges staying the same. As stated, this increase is necessary to meet the increased cost of maintaining the system, as well as preparing for our portion of the loan repayment due in January of two thousand and nineteen. The town rate will increase from six twenty-five to seven twenty-two per thousand. The new rates will go into effect for the June, July, and August two thousand and eighteen quarter, with bills issued September first of two thousand and eighteen. The town commercial rates will also increase, the commercial rates will increase to nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per thousand. All sewer rates for both town and village will remain the same as they have in the past. All our users, hopefully, understand why this matter is so important, and their understanding is greatly appreciated. With this matter in mind, I had the opportunity, at the Nikon conference I recently attended, to speak with the water project funding source, EFC Environmental Facilities Corporation, and express my concerns about financial issues, the size of the loan, repayment concerns, project expectations, and the reality of commercial residential development. And I was told by the representatives that all potential issues would be reviewed by the organization, and they would contact the project principals, the village, the town, and the engineers to discuss further considerations. Hopefully, something new will develop from these conversations. Updates, smoke testing for I and I infiltration and inflow, have to ask every time what that second I is. And the wastewater system was done last week for a few, and with a few problems identified. The testing team will return later this week and camera some lines identified as problem areas. It seems we're treating much more flow than we should, and this will help identify solutions to lessen the treatment burden of the wastewater plant. We had a problem with one of the blowers at the treatment plant, Mike was able to get it started again, but this just indicates the potential for future failure. Mr. Fletcher of B and L, Burton and the Junis, emailed that replacement blowers will go out to bid soon, and we should see progress in this matter. In fact, when I emailed him of our issue with one of them, uh, being unavailable for service for a couple days, he said that he would speed up the processing and push for the bids to go out quicker.
Out of service again.
The site has been inspected for size and placement needs, so again, that segment of this part is moving forward. We have a conference call Tuesday the fifteenth with the Office of the Comptroller, New York State Environmental Protection and Spill Compensation Fund, and DEC to discuss our available options to address the contamination issues outside the village office. Hopefully, something can be worked out to lessen the financial burden of remediation on the village. Keep your fingers crossed regarding this concern. The ATL report indicates some contamination issues in three areas of the village office, with the one in the front of the building being most in need of attention. I will relay to the board any information as soon as it is known, and we can develop a plan, hopefully with New York State and DEC, to alleviate this ongoing issue. We have permission for Mr. Valaket, owner of the old Champlin Elementary School, to use the playing field for baseball this summer. The field in Perry Mills will be used for softball, and an area of the playground will be used for T-ball. It is important to have these venues here in the village, so we can be properly represented in this summer youth program. More information on this matter will be forthcoming. Staff vacations are taking a toll. Mike, Janet, and I last week interviewed a temp worker, this was on Thursday. He should be, the plan is for him to start on the twenty ninth of May, he has to give notice at his job, and, uh, he will be, hopefully, on board on the twenty ninth. Uh, let's see. Mike is obviously inundated with some of the issues, hopefully, this person, this temp person can pick up some of the slack and do some of the groundskeeping and things that take a lot of time, you know, and take the regular staff away from their, away from their, away from their jobs. Okey-dokey, an up of the downside and something good for one of award members. I would like to again congratulate Janet on her receiving the Citizen of the Year Award from the Woodman of the World, a much deserved honor for all her community endeavors, endeavors. Congratulations and thank you. Again, uh... I'd like to special, I'd like to schedule a special meeting on, on Tuesday the twenty ninth at six o'clock, uh, for a public hearing on the charter contract and final bill paying meeting, take care of all the late bills that come in, so we can start the new year fresh. Uh, and there was one other thing, what was the other thing? There was one other thing besides...
It's a public hearing, isn't it, on the time Warner, it's not?
Yes, the Charter Cable Time Warner, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Into gray on...
Spectrum. Or Time Warner.
Yeah, the window bis, the covering episode.
Okay. Wearing up covering building. Okay. Thank you for all your attention and the approach and every time, have a good evening. Who wants to start? I know you like that, that's why I say that.
I'll start. Um, so, uh, good news, when I asked you last month if you wanted me to seek out grants for the additional bench, um, that we decided to go with two benches as opposed to the four benches, I was able to get all four benches covered, so...
Great.
Woo-hoo!
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, so that is due to Ed Rindick Health Institute, um, as their final funds, they had extra money, and no one else was asking, so I was a hog and asked for it all. And we got it, so that's good. Um, we also, through, um, the CBPH, um, grant, there is, was funding available, they liked our proposal to kick off the summer with the hip-hop program again, and so, they are paying the four hundred and thirty dollar fee that will be this year to have it two sessions, ten AM and eleven AM, the last week of June. So, school is out that week, and the plan around that is to kick off and have available to give to all the participants, so kids through adults, it's open to anybody who wants to be there for that second session. The first session is for ten years and under. To let them know of all the things that we are going to be having available for the summer, and all the physical activity and whatnot that's available in our park. I did not hear back from the grant yet that I wrote, that decision comes out the end of May, um, for the kayak launch. So, I gotta get them crossed for that one, so when you hear a loud, "Yee-hoo!", that means we got that, too.
That goes across the valley.
Yes, that's right, that's right. So, you know, it still goes to say, you have a hundred percent chance of a no if you don't ask, and at least a fifty-fifty percent chance when you do ask, and it has paid off over the twenty years of, um... Begging for things with Saint Mary's, and the grant writing has been very successful, so, um, it's, it's kind of exciting.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks to me.
Minor, minor.
Well, it's, it's big, that, I mean, it's big, it's big here.
It's exciting.
It's big, it keeps us moving forward, so...
That's right, that's right, so, and I think that, you know, I don't know whether, um, you know, we can work on like a little brochure to hand out to everybody, did you know, you know, with the horseshoe pits? And I really think that we should leave a set of horseshoes down there, they may disappear, but let's try it so that the pits are used. Has anybody come up to sign out horseshoes? Yeah, so, you know, there's this nice rack that, you know, I'm gonna try and talk Paul into making, uh, that we can put down there and hang the, the horseshoes on. I, I think we'll see more and more people, I mean, you look at the number of fishermen, I mean, this past weekend was so exciting, as the place was packed at six AM in the morning for people going out on that nice high river after the storm. That was a weekend ago, sorry. You know, we just have so much potential, there are so many things happening, you know, as I'm writing to Grant, and I'm going through all the things that have changed over the years, and, you know, what we've done, uh, you know, their response to that was they were very excited to hear, you know, for the size of our community, what we're doing, and, um... Yeah, it's awesome, so...
That's made a difference.
Yeah. All right, that's all for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom, can I go ahead?
Yeah, all I've got is a little public announcement, we've got a blood drive at the Champlin Catholic Men's Club, June fourth, from three to seven, so that's coming up soon. Guys, get it on your calendars, I'm always looking for new donors, please come down. There are always free cookies and giveaways. That's all I have here.
Good, thank you. Janet?
Well, I did apply for Status's Tree City USA, I haven't heard yet if we'll be awarded that, but I think we have a really good chance. Um, altogether, over last spring through this spring, we've put twelve trees in, in at the playground, which is pretty amazing. And I, then I also applied for certification for our farmer's market to be a New York State certified farmer's market, and what that means is that the, um, farmers will be able to accept the, the senior coupons or, and those things that the health department handed out.
Snap things that they hand out, yeah.
Yeah, I don't exactly know what it is, but, um, the stumbling block before was that we needed two farmers, and I got two farmers, so I was able to, yeah, so I think we were a little late, but I'm pretty sure we'll be able to get it, and people have been asking, you know, we'd, we'd like to come there, but you don't take those certificates, so this should make a nice difference.
This should help, then.
Yeah, I think so. Um, as far as, um, events, uh, we have a packed summer, I won't name every, everything, but, um, just to say, we have the, a book club meeting next week on the twenty-third. Penny Klute went to Vietnam in January for three weeks, and she's doing a slideshow of her photograph... Penny Klute went to Vietnam in January for three weeks, and she's doing a slideshow of her photographs called Vietnam Exposures on May thirtieth at six thirty at the meeting house, and then she'll answer questions about the country and her experiences. Dr. Frost, Rich Frost, is coming back on June fourteenth. People ask if I could get him to come back to talk about his book on baseball. So he's always pretty entertaining, that's on June fourteenth, also at six thirty. As far as the summer activities go, um, the longboat should be coming soon. We have the kids' fun run scheduled for alternating Sundays. I have four concerts scheduled. The community garden has some signups, the farmer's market will start in July. It's going to be really busy, which is good.
Looks like a busy summer.
So many plots are available in the community garden.
What have we had signed up so far, maybe six?
Ready to go, it's still.
Oh, it is? Oh, good.
It's till Friday, I'm just gonna close the ends of the fence.
Okay. How many?
I didn't divide them up, I don't know.
What's it usually, like twelve?
Well, it depends on how big you want them. We've had eighteen, we've had twelve.
Look at what you got signed up, and we'll make them a little bigger box.
Yeah, make them bigger.
Rather have them used than go to see.
Taken care of, I was only taking care of it this.
We must have at least six people signed up now, I think, eight, okay.
Is there some with doubles?
Well, and now's the time for all your underground stuff to get in, while the ground is still cool. Go now.
With beets and stuff?
Yeah, all that, yeah, beach and lettuce.
I don't know, it'll only be two months, we gotta wait for the turtles to come up through there. In the spring, you could, yeah, after you tell it, you could down here and look, turtles come up out of the river.
Put it in the puddle.
Fertilize it.
They couldn't be down deep enough, so they didn't.
So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, talked to Sierra Nessbitl, a public health educator at the Clinton County Health Department about the community liaison position. She was still working on the information, um, she said there's opportunities that will be coming up, um, and she would be emailing the information to me in a few weeks. I have not seen anything on it yet, but they were still working on it. I did ask about the, um, the program that they did last summer. They actually came in through one of our programs where I work and brought in the cash cards. And, and they, you know, did a little thing in, in our little break room, and, um, you got a ten dollar cash card. And we, I asked her if they were gonna do that again, and she said we've had a lot of people inquiring about that. But again, it had to be one of these certified, and we had one at the community or the farmer's market last year. So, um, I said, and, and believe me, if you get one of those cards, they will call you and call you and call you until you spend it. Because they wanna, they wanna know what your experience was, where did you use it? And I said, well, I'm waiting for our market to open in Champlain, um, and be able to get down there and use it there, so. And I was able to, so if they do that again, it, it will bring people in. And if they, they expand it, it, it will allow people to go spend a ten dollar gift card. So, um. Yeah, so as soon as I get the information on that, I have been checking my email, I have not seen anything. And for the exciting spectrum, Time Warner Cable Charter franchise agreement. Kevin Egan, lovely man, um, very, very nice, very accommodating. Janet and I met a week ago, and we went over the couple of things that were highlighted. And, um, I said, well, you know, he gave me his cell phone number, why don't we just call him? And we wrapped it up. And, and he said, well, I'll come up and meet with you if you want. I said, there's really no need, you answered our questions. We're good. So he was going to be sending the new contract. The only change, basically, was they wanted to do fifteen years, and we said no. Mayor Martin had suggested possibly five, they said basically what they do now, it's either ten or fifteen year contracts. I said, well, we don't wanna do fifteen, so he's like, okay, we'll do ten. Uh, we kept the, um, franchise fee at three percent because if we ask for more, it gets passed on to the consumer and nobody needs to pay more for cable. So we, we left it at three. It's not a huge amount of money, I mean, it's never gonna, you know, put us into big money buckets, but it's something. And he was going to send the template for the public hearing. So I believe we've probably received all that.
Yes, we have all that.
Like, probably the next day, he was on top of it. And I will say this, the woman, Pat Johnson, who I worked with and Greg worked with a couple of years ago, or I guess ten years ago, has retired, and I spoke with a Carol McTagg, very, very nice, sent a sample contract for another town that she did. And, um, you know, highlighted some of the things that we should look for, and very, very, very nice lady to speak with, so. And that was that with that.
Good, and this still has to be approved by the Public Service Commission anyway. So that's, that's good, it's the way to circle the complaints, so that's good. Thank you, thank you. Okay, anything else?
I'm good.
Have a report from the Treasury, please.
Um, everyone has their expense and revenue reports for April. We don't have a lot of money, but we'll pay our bills.
Well, it's the time of year when we should be getting done.
We're not in the black, we're not in the black, so.
Black is good, red is not.
Yeah. Our expenses, we have, you know, our expenses are down a little, so we have a little extra, but I don't think we're gonna have a whole heck of a lot of gear when we get down, roll over.
Well, as Greg just pointed out, that's the way budgets supposed to work. As long as we have a little extra, it all matters.
Well, and considering all the unexpecteds that we had this year, that's pretty.
Yeah, we had a lot of additional costs.
Yes.
Are you all, you have information on generators for your report?
Just in regards to. No, I didn't do a report, but I just got it, I just printed it out.
Okay.
But I don't know, or discuss it.
Well, that or special meeting, we can, we'll get it all tied up, and then at the special meeting, we need to have this done before, June first.
And give everybody a copy.
Make sure we have the money for it.
Take a little look at it or whatever. Yeah, we'll spend the rest of whatever you've got left in the black, probably.
Okay.
Well, we may have to transfer a little bit, but that's so important to get that online, as well as some of the other things, you know, I mean, that, I'm not going there, go ahead, Juanita.
Okay, we have your reports, I mean, they're, our expenses aren't where they, you know, are a little bit less, and our revenues are where they should be, so.
Okay. All right, any questions for Juanita? You need to do some transfers?
Yes. Did you wanna just, do you wanna read them, do you wanna just approve them?
You have to read the record?
Yes, they have to read the record.
Okay, go ahead.
To A fourteen ten point four, the clerk, um, eighteen hundred and fifteen dollars from shared services, nineteen hundred, nineteen eighty nine point four. We paid, we paid Twin State for our computers program once a year. So that's the additional, um, the additional funds to cover that bill. To A fifty one eighty two point four, the lighting district, from A eight nineteen eighty nine point four, shared services, seven hundred and sixty five dollars. To A fourteen forty point one, engineering, eighteen hundred, from A nineteen eighty nine point four, shared services. That's the additional, the last bill for ATL for their services. A fifty one ten point two, streets equipment, to, from A fifty one ten point four, streets contractual, eighteen hundred to cover the, um, the rest of the funding for the frost and the twelve inch bucket. To F eighty three twenty point four, source of supply, um, for lighting at the water plant, from A eighty three twenty point two, source of supply equipment, hundred and fifteen dollars. To G fourteen ten, fourteen forty point one, engineering, thirty four hundred and fifteen dollars. To G eighty one, from G eighty one thirty point two, treatment and disposal equipment, um, thirty four fifteen. That's for the study Barton and La Judas did on the blowers.
Which ones were approved with the, with the grant? We should be hearing soon that will pay for this. That thirty four fifteen will be taken up as a grant funding, so. And, you motion to approve?
So much.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Little call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, get rid of the large warrant today.
First of all, there's one invoice that you have on the original warrant, it's for Kinsley. The invoice is five hundred and forty two fifty from F eighty three forty point two, which has been removed. And then we have additional invoices, um, fifteen thousand fifty three dollars and twenty six cents for a total warrant of forty five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and five cents.
What was the, uh, twenty eighth and fourth quarter payment for town for twenty four nineteen fifty?
Mike.
For Mike, okay. Thanks.
Sure, a couple, yeah, there's a couple under Water Fund. That, Kinsley, that's taken off?
Yes, we removed that one.
Okay, and, um, three ninety two, EJ Prescott. This wire?
That's good.
Is that project cost, or is that ours?
It's under project, it's, it's a wire for meter, for pit radios.
Uh, on the additional bills, the Amazon Dogway Station, where, where did that one go in?
I don't yet.
Where's it, where's it gonna go?
The end of the, the beginning of the trail.
In the village?
Yes.
Okay.
We have one that's going over on South Street next to Dean's, we have that one here now. Then the other one's going at the beginning of the trail up on Elm Street.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect, yes.
We were talking about that.
Putting one there, so I'm glad we've already thought of that.
People aren't picking them up.
I'm just throwing a dump yard.
Might help.
We're picking it up as we go. I can't stand it, I drown, can't stand it.
Well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm glad we got that big credit, um, from Casella Waste, that's good. I'm glad they're on top of that thirty seven cent credit.
Probably tax.
Tax on what?
Dumpster.
Not thirty seven, tax.
It's a fee.
It was probably tax on the, on the.
It's a few, it's on, it's a tax on the, on the environmental charge that they charge. It fluctuates every month, so you can't keep track of anything.
We were using last month's, and you can send us the bill, it was a little bit less. Gotta make it right.
All right, is there any further discussion on the work? Everyone happy?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Um, we need a motion.
Go, need a motion to approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
Now, any further discussion? Keep things ready here.
That's right.
Now, I have a roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Deliker, you're up.
Didn't do any paperwork for tonight, but we're in the middle right now of, uh, street sweeping. Eventually, we will probably see us do some hydrant flushing, um, we're behind, there's no doubt. Everything is, we're just trying to take care of the day-to-day stuff right now. We've had a few issues with some sewer lines, uh, grease issues, which we're working on, uh, we're working on now, Price Chopper had an issue with their line coming out, had to do some digging over there, they did some digging and, uh, got it, got it open, got it fixed. So right now, it's mostly street cleanup, and, um, speaking of street cleanup, we've been having some issues with our dump yard, so we got a cable across our dump yard. Any village residents that needed to bring brush or leaves or, uh, yard debris, loose yard debris, need to come to the village office and get a key, uh, to open the lock for the dump yard, because, um, I've been, it's been full three, four times a week, and they push it back, there's people's stuff going in all over. We've had a few, found some that was hauled in from Ross's Point, and I did talk to them, and they came and got it. Everything, uh, caught some people in every point rush. People are telling me they can bring their stuff here, so, yeah.
I have also noticed lumber in there.
So, oh yeah, lumber, nails, you know, pallets, you name it, so. It became a point that can't police it, that I'm gonna just have to close it, and it'll be inconvenient, but the people have to come here, I got this weekend, or yesterday in Cameron, I see here this weekend, there's people now they're dumping it in front of the, you know, back up and just dump in front of the cable there, by the fence, but. So if you're from out of the village, or the stuff is coming from out of the village, and you get caught putting on Elm Street, the, you'll be getting a visit from the sheriff or the state police, um, because the signs are there and people just ignore them, so. We've been, you know, people that I've been catching have been telling them, making them come pick it up, but it shouldn't become a point in time that I'm just gonna bypass that and go to make an example of somebody, because it gets to a point where it's, I mean, you gotta go pick stuff out of there, you know?
Yeah, I'm tired for that, mate.
So it is what it is, and, uh, hopefully this will curb some of that, you know, at least if they have to come here. So, we're hoping. So it is, it's still, uh, it's still busy. We, I still have a few meters that I don't have in, I still have to get in, some up on top of Prospect, I still got a few pumps to unhook. It's just where we are, I guess, in the season. We've got a, we've got a busy, we've got a busy summer ahead of us. There's no doubt, we're not gonna be able to get everything done, um, I gotta get the street cleaned up. I'm gonna have a bazaar coming here in the end of the month, um, we gotta get our hydrant flushing done, and then I gotta start on, there's a lot of places that need ditching and, and drainage, so we can get, thinking about asphalt. So that's where we are, that's where we are right now. I do have some stuff that I'm gonna need, I didn't make copies, and I don't know if you just want me to leave them and you're gonna look at it for next time or whatever, but I didn't make everybody, everybody copies, but there's some stuff that I'm gonna, that I'm gonna need.
Well, obviously, I, I think our greatest concern right now is that generator. We can discuss that over the next week or so, and then bring it back up as a special meeting.
Yep, is that what's out of service?
What's that?
The generator?
Uh, we don't, our generator's not big enough to run.
We need the blowers backed down.
Our blowers, our blower, our blowers back down.
Blow down.
It went, it cut down to half this morning, uh, drawing half the amperage and putting out half the air, I had to shut it down and start another one up, so. No, we haven't had a, our generator won't run our plant, so we don't have a backup.
Gotcha.
So I just, like I say, I just got it tonight, he just sent it to me, so. We've got two cohorts and look at the options.
Recommendations go from, what have we had now, sixty?
Yeah, to a hundred and fifty.
To a hundred and fifty. Takes a lot of energy to run that plant.
And we were looking at natural gas. But we'll, I've got some other options to, you know, to look at, uh, is it what it's partially, he's telling me, but it just depends on what we wanna do, we also want a few of the natural gas. Quite a difference of place between them, so. Lot of difference in work, too. You have to change the gasoline, upsize it, because it's so big. We'll see, I have, I'll have paper, I can give you guys, if you look at them.
You'll have information on the differences between the two fuels?
Well, right now, I don't, I just have them under natural, so, um, yeah, but the difference of prices mentioned to me tonight, so.
And so you, but you'll have that eventually?
Yeah, I can, we can, we can print out what a diesel one is versus a gasoline.
Okay.
We can email it to you next time.
Yeah.
We can spread it.
Because.
I do have some other stuff too, that we're gonna, uh, uh, I need batteries for our radios. We had originally, uh, for our two-way radios, uh, from Wells, we originally got batteries, extra batteries when we got them back five years ago, and we never, we, we kept them, we didn't put them in a cycle that way there, when they, other ones, they were shot, we put them in cycle. Well, because we didn't put them in cycle, we can't charge them, they went dead and you can't charge them, I brought them back, there's nothing they can do. So we got four, four batteries, I think we put one of them in a cycle that we can't use, so we're gonna need, uh, five batteries for our, uh, radios.
Mm-hmm.
Which is six hundred and ten dollars worth. Someplace I can get them from, well, Wells, that's where the radios came from. I'm asking the board if I can purchase five batteries for our radios, they're a hundred and twenty-two dollars a piece, um, six hundred and ten dollars worth.
Explain to me, what happened again?
We need batteries for our two-way radios.
Yeah, I get them, both.
We had brand new ones.
Right.
And we didn't put them in cycle, so we start charging when using them, we saved them, and we had about one battery each radio, we bought a spare with each one because we never did and they sat, they went dead and you can't charge them, the charger will not recognize they're there, there's nothing we can do and the because we've had them for four years or five years, they won't, the company won't go good for them.
It's kind of was longer than that, wasn't longer than that?
Well, I was here, I've been here for five years, yeah, they did radio, they just, uh, about a little five years probably. So, apparently, rechargeable batteries, you have to charge them at some point, they're a lithium ion, yeah, lithium ion battery. And because they're, they are so dead, the charger, smart charger won't recognize, and there's no way to bring them back and use them.
So you're bringing them back for life?
Yeah.
You get it?
Yeah, so.
Would someone like to make a motion to spend that money to get those batteries?
Yes, some of them.
I'll second that.
Any amount?
Six hundred and ten dollars for five batteries.
So can you set up something in the computers that will trigger the movement of these as opposed to they don't go dead again?
Well, we're gonna put it right in this, we've got, right now, we've, we've got a couple that won't take a charge anymore that are no good.
Right.
I didn't know this originally when we got them.
Right.
But, I mean, we won't have any spares, we're gonna put these in, in cycle, so we'll be using these.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Uh, also, our, we've got a Husqvarna trimmer here, uh, well, trimmer takes a click on attachments, we've got paddles, chainsaw, trimmer head for it. That was, I don't know what year it was, but that is finally, the motor has burned up, so it's time to replace it, um. I priced from two places, I priced from Taylor and Plasberg, and I priced from Dragon's down here, and these guys were eighty dollars cheaper. Uh, you're looking at three hundred and nineteen dollars for a replacement, uh, trimmer, and that takes all of our, uh.
Current attachments.
Right, 'cause just like the paddle sets, three hundred dollars. So it doesn't, it wouldn't make sense for us just to buy a trimmer and get rid of the attachments that we have, we've got a chainsaw, we've got the paddles, and the trimmer.
Switching brands would be a good idea.
Right, we have, we, we had, we did, we bought an Echo, which we have, but we need, we're, use two, there's two of them we use, you usually use the one at the sewer plant, one for here, we can put paddles on both. That's, you only have the pole saw for, um, so it's really that all of our attachments are no good without a power head for it. The power head is, uh, it retails for three ninety-nine, they'll give me, they give us twenty percent, I'll give it to us for three nineteen. And that comes with a trimmer head, they all come with it, with a trimmer head. So I'm looking to see if we can get that replaced as well, three hundred and nineteen dollars for a Husqvarna trimmer.
And that's where?
It's three ninety-nine at Taylor, or three ninety-three here, usually treats us pretty well.
Need a motion to approve?
Yep, some of them.
Second.
That's to expend three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Three nineteen.
For guns?
For guns, I don't know about it.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Uh, next thing I got is a, uh, Whacker diaphragm, three-inch diaphragm pump, which we use for water breaks, we had issues with ours, um, during all of our.
Many water breaks?
Yeah, um, and I priced it from a couple places, um, locally, nineteen hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, the cheapest place I found it online is seventeen forty-one fifty-nine. For the same style pump that we have, same stuff that we use in Whacker, three-inch diaphragm. So I'm looking to see if we can possibly get a replacement pump, ours is still working, but we've been having, uh, it doesn't always, um, doesn't always work like it should, um.
Well, you're trying to pump out that hole and you gotta take that pump apart two, two or three times a session.
Then the holes filled up.
It gets a little tighter, so.
So we're looking to have at least, this way here, we'll try to use the old one, we can still use this one for backup. You know, we have the old one for backup pump and still be able to have.
Is it the motor or the pump itself?
Pump itself.
So, diaphragm.
Uh, for a while, we were having trouble, we, and we had, we used to have a, uh, centrifugal pump, we had trouble, but I think our biggest problem was the ethanol gas, when, when you don't use them for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And we had trouble, it wasn't start, it won't run, um, I started getting just a five-gallon can of ethanol-free.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, we're, we're working on this.
That's what I do.
Yeah, we're working on, we're working on right now.
I have trouble with equipment since I did that.
Getting a car that we can use, um, tax exempt car for fuel to get, so we can use it and they'll accept it there. You know, for a little bit that we use, I went to Stewarts and got five gallons, that's the same thing we've been using for our two-cycle mix. I get a can, we mix it, because we've had so much trouble, some of that equipment doesn't run, you know, like you let it set, maybe the chainsaw right now with trees and then you may not, you may let it set for, then you can't start it, we have issues, uh, I know it's a little bit more.
I know you use a lot of, uh, two-cycle mix, so we paid to buy the pre-mix. See, I do because I don't use much, here, the volume's probably too high.
I don't think so because it's, it's expensive.
Oh, it is.
We, I mean, right now, we use.
Yeah, I made trouble now.
We use the most now because of our, I mean.
I made trouble.
We've probably, in the last, uh, month, we've probably used seven and a half gallons, so, you know.
Yeah, I know, that's why we had the volume, there's no place to buy that by volume, that's.
I don't think so.
Not even by, by the cord.
A lot of times like the fire departments and people use it, but they, we don't need.
Yeah.
How often do they use, like their roof stoves and stuff, do you want them to start, they gotta.
Yeah.
Our trimmers, this time of year's not bad, but when you get back into the winter season, when you don't use it for, that's where we have trouble, when you're first in the spring, you know? So. I mean, maybe the last tank, you know, before we put it away, even if we had one container and then put some through it, it'd probably be all right, but with the ethanol-free, it seems to be, it seems to be okay, still puts stable.
Well, that's, that's, that's the biggest key is. Yeah, why in the, uh, ethanol-free gas.
Especially the company that you don't use all the time.
Yeah. But yeah, that, that pre-mix is, they just always run those out and everything, I know you have to do that, it starts first of all.
Yeah.
In the spring, it's amazing, the difference that it makes, so I don't know if you buy that in bulk, if you could, it'd be easier on the equipment, but.
I don't know, it's, I don't think it's too cheap.
I don't think you can. But anyways, back to, back to the point, is there shipping on that one you found for seventeen?
Yes, that includes the shipping.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask too.
The local one, they wanted seventy-five bucks shipping, this one here, uh, I put in our zip code and they wanted fifty dollars and seven percent, so that should be the delivered price, um.
What's the total?
Seventeen forty-one fifty-nine.
Someone like to make a motion?
What are, what are the three quotes you got, we'd like to have all three of them?
I can give you, uh, I've got another one in my office, but, uh, the one that was local or semi-local was nineteen sixty-three. Was the quote, I can give you, I'll be the other one in my office.
Yeah, well, we have to have three for that amount of money, so.
Sure.
Be official here.
Water main brakes that I've been on, or been in it, you wanna make sure that that pump works.
Well, yeah, you're out there in freezing cold night and the thing dies.
Or you gotta take it apart because the, the vacuum is lost, or it just.
What, and you get it fixed, you have to be feeding water back in?
Yep, and that's a couple times, that's a couple times a session at least.
I can imagine.
Do we have enough funds in the water, we need it to take out seventeen forty-one fifty-nine? I know we've used a tonnage. Equipment, I have twenty-four point nine left.
Seventeen sixty-nine ninety-nine.
We have money in the, F eighty-three twenty point two. Well, source of supply, power pumping equipment? F eighty-three twenty point two, okay. F eighty-three twenty point two, okay.
Source of supply.
Okay. Power and pumping. And make a motion, did we do that already, we did, right?
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't. Make a motion to purchase the one for seventeen forty-one fifty-nine.
Have a second?
A second. Who's that from, just for the heck of it?
Uh, that's from, I don't remember.
Okay, and is there warranty on it too?
It's gonna, yeah, Whacker, it comes right from the factory, so, uh.
Whacker's a good name.
No, Whacker, no, it's the same one, it's the same brand as we have.
Okay.
Um, I'm supposed to be getting another call for the same pump also from Taylor and Plasberg, but he wouldn't have it to me, he was supposed to send to me, he forgot, we're supposed to get it tomorrow. I'm sure it's gonna be.
So amend my motion to, uh, purchase the Whacker, it's seventeen forty-one fifty-nine.
And they're all the same brand.
Right, from this location, unless Taylor comes in for less, then go with it.
Which, I can't see that happening.
Yeah, right.
How long is it going to take?
I don't know if it says on this one.
Couple weeks, month?
I'm sure, but I can, uh, I can put it on our village card so that we'll have it going.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, hopefully we'll all beat it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We'll make sure of ethanol-free gas so we can store it.
Do you have a second on that?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Hey, no further discussion, have a roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. No more money, we're broke.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'll have some more for you later, but not right now.
Another twenty-nine?
It's gonna dry, yeah.
Can you get it to us, like, at least by Wednesday before Memorial Day weekend, since we're gonna meet coming back from a holiday weekend, so we have time to review?
Yes, please.
Would save time and move the meeting along.
Yeah.
I need a, I gotta put tires in that one tub, so I gotta get a coal, you know? Six tires right there, all of them. Should be a few things.
Like, when you get left?
It's gotta be.
How much you have left in that butt end of mine?
Don't, don't tell him.
I'll smite with Mike please, I want to change the meeting date. All right, you done, Mike?
No, yeah, I'm done.
All right, correspondence please.
Um, J C monthly report for March and April, um, letter to thank, letter of thanks to Pfizer, um, they gave us some supplies. Correspondence from Plin County Treasurer's Office with first quarter sales tax revenue. Correspondence from Code's Officer Tatro to High Sun Hall. Correspondence from Cor, from Code's Officer Tatro to Courtney Moynihan. Correspondence from Code's Officer Tatro to Rodney Ducharme. Correspondence from Code's Officer Tatro to Neil Coolen regarding property maintenance. Correspondence from Code's Officer Tatro to Sean Moynihan regarding property maintenance. Chip's funding and insurance claim from John Triller in response from insurance company.
Okay, part of this claim, if I can just explain a little bit, part of this claim is not under, or will not be covered under the village's insurance. Because the claim was filed too late, it was not signed properly, and part of this, uh, with the labor, topsoil, et cetera. That was not caused, this damage was not caused by the village, but was caused by the water project. So that, if it's going to be covered, notice the word if, then that will have to be covered under the water project, not from the village's insurance program. All we are responsible for is the driveway. Because that's where the, that's where the, that's where the hole was, that's where the rupture was, and we had to, we had to dig that out anyway to fix it, but. We still have to blacktop, do some blacktopping here when we do the blacktopping, but, uh, most of this claim is under the water project.
That's gotta be dug up too.
And that's gotta be fixed.
The hydrant, there's much taken out, I mean.
Is Mr. Triller aware of that, if this will be?
He should be, because the insurance company was going to notify him.
Nobody's aware it's gonna be redone.
Well, I mean, the hydrants, it's, the topsoil, there's as much of hydrants taken out, that's gotta be raised, I don't know what's gonna happen yet, I'm still waiting to find out, they're getting the right extensions.
Yep.
The whole hydrants aren't even done yet, I don't know. So they're all, a lot of them are not usable. I mean, surely, that should be done before finally.
Saga continues.
So if we have a fire and you need one of those fire hydrants.
Must have picked a different one.
Who's gonna be liable if, you know?
We've asked that question many times and all we do is get the runaround.
Yeah, so you mentioned in your report about, you know, the town was going to have a plan for you, did they give a timeline on this plan?
No.
So it's just all a continuation of a joke?
They haven't even started inviting contractors in to look over the properties that need restoration and come up with a set of limitations as to what will be done and what will not be done, because right now, I mean, Mike said the experience where people are calling and saying, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, and it, what they're requesting was not part of the project. It was more than, so there needs to be a side of guy, or a set of guidelines for whomever the town is going to employ as a contractor to do the restoration. That's why I, I feel that this is beyond our DPW, this is not, I'm not gonna ask Mike to take the time to go spread topsoil.
Well, we're never gonna get caught up with our regular duties, we're just gonna continue to get further and further behind it, our expense.
And it's always been our expense.
Exactly, it's gotta stop.
Crazy. Will the village have any say in who the contractor is?
Yeah.
Probably.
Um, probably not.
The first thing they're gonna do is find somebody to go house to house with each property and mark out what's gonna be done, so everybody that looks at it can bid on the same thing.
We just wanna make sure that our properties are covered.
That's their start.
That's why I wanted to.
And if lower term, I probably.
No, they, they did negotiations, they did, uh, everything with the bonding company. And that will be, obviously, a topic of conversation when I talk to EFC. Because this whole thing just wasn't handled correctly. Right from the first shovel they hit the ground.
When the truck was jackknifed sideways in the road on the hill and they showed up, should have pulled the plug then.
That's true, right there, yeah, stuck in the middle of it.
When I saw that, that, you know, you hate to say you could see in the future.
On the hill with a curve?
They tried to, they tried to get a low boy in there and they hung it up with a loader, with an excavator on it.
First day they got here.
Across Route nine.
Yeah.
They, they drove it off, they drove it off and lifted the trailer up with the excavator to, yeah, they hung it up right across State Route nine, no flaggers. They drove it off, they drove it off and lifted the trailer up with the excavator to, yeah, they hung it up right across State Route nine, no flag or nothing.
No flag, no nothing.
They tried to get on Mill Street and a low boy.
And then didn't finish the job when they put that hydrant in. Was it supposed to shut off or something?
River crossing shut off, we don't have river crossing shut off. They forgot to put it in. They were caught, and they went down to find it, couldn't find it. Just a lot of stuff, though.
Greg?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question on your report on something other than the water project?
Oh, thank you.
So the temporary person?
Yes.
That you guys interviewed?
Yes.
So are we not going through West staff?
We are.
Oh, okay.
They sent him up, they sent him up to, I'm sorry, I shouldn't mention that.
That someone else sent you with the other day, I just happened to have that on top. Oh, okay. No, I just, because you didn't say, um, West staff, I didn't know of.
Oh, oh.
Because I'm, I'm thinking, it, it seems to have worked very well using West staff and it's.
Yes.
They've done very well by us and we need to take on all.
Saves us a lot of work in the paperwork area and all of this stuff.
Saves us a lot of liability too, when you take on all the liability, that's huge.
And if we're not happy, you just pick up the phone and say, we're not happy, and that person is.
Okay, that was my only question as to why we weren't using them, but you just answered that, so, okay.
Yes, thank you.
That was it?
Under new business, public hearing for the charter contract will be May twenty-ninth at six fifteen. We will start the regular meeting at six and have the public hearing begin at six fifteen and then go from there. Purchase of a new generator, we will have the paperwork and stuff from Mike to get to you before the twenty-ninth. So that we can, uh, we can look at that, make sure that, uh, wanting to do some fancy figuring to make sure that we have some money in the rollover area. To cover that cost and expect that summer's in the vicinity of seventy-five. Less. Yeah, that's good then. Sixty thousand maybe. And that's with us doing some of the padwork.
Again, another part of the project. Should have done figured.
I mean, we don't, well, we probably do have the time, but there's still, there's still things down there that weren't.
Having a door big enough to get something in.
That weren't written into the, written into the contract.
We had talked about that during the negotiations, what was the reason that they didn't wanna put a generator in?
I don't remember talking, we didn't talk about it?
Yeah, I remember that issue coming up a couple of times.
It was over and above what we already had, actually they figured that the sixty would carry it. Or upgrade it to an eighty, that was the suggestion by the engineers.
Yeah.
And then we had, Mike had some, uh, some people come in and look at it and deal with this stuff all the time. And they said to run that plant, they looked at our electric bills over the last couple of months. To run that plant. You could probably do it with a hundred and twenty kilowatt. But they, they said you might wanna go with a difference in price, go a hundred and fifty. In case there's any additional usage down there in the future.
We're not upgrading in our lifetime.
No.
No.
Well, then we can, I mean, if you want a generator, we'll say you used one.
I need a generator for the house.
Well, this one's a big one.
They'll run a house.
So I have to pick and choose what I want.
You can run an extension cord over to our house, it'll lay both of us off.
Okay, so under new business, public hearing and the purchase, uh, we will discuss on the twenty-ninth for a special meeting. The blower study, uh, emailed, as I mentioned, emailed to Mr. Fletcher. You know, speed up that process a little bit, get these things out a bit and, uh, and try to get this process moving a little quicker, I would like to see, hopefully, I would like to see everything in there by the end of September, first of October. I don't know if that's feasible, but we will see. The I N I study, uh, as I mentioned, the smoke testing is done, had a couple of issues, uh. If there were plumbing issues in the house, that's why there was smoke coming in the house. Normally you could stand outside and let the smoke come out of the, out of the sewer vent. Which was interesting.
It was pretty cool, I have to say, to stand in people's backyards and see the smoke.
There were a couple of people who, oh, I can't stand it, the smoke's burning my eyes, well, there were issues inside the house.
Open trap.
And a common one is your trap dries out, so. And some had bathrooms they didn't use, or a sink they didn't use, or something like that.
Broken lines.
Yep, so that's, and.
They didn't overdo them? He doesn't, yeah, they, some of it, didn't know why, so we found them, you know, pointed out where they dropped them, where they got fixed.
People didn't need to be home for this, obviously, you could tell if there was an issue.
Well, when the smoke starts coming out of the basement walls and, oh yeah.
It was that much smoke?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I guess people were homeless rolling out the basements, you know.
That's why we called the party department.
Some had run tests, you know.
Okay, with the, with the smoke testing. With the smoke testing, these folks will be back Wednesday. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, they're gonna run the cameras through the lines and identify the spots where there's a problem. I mean, I was watching, Mike was doing some sewer jetting out here behind bars. Pulled that manhole cover and there was a stream of water coming in like a garden hose from the outside, just running into that sewer system, in that sewer line.
No, easy fix, that's it.
Some bones.
No, the wall.
We discussed the water rates, the change in the water rates. Uh, I think we preliminarily approved this, or at least spent some time at the last meeting. This is, uh, you have, I believe you have everything in front of you. This was a draft, the one page that says draft was the one that I shared with the town. After we talked about this last month, uh, they kinda looked at it and I haven't heard anything from them since. So, uh, we will go with agreed upon six twenty-five a thousand for the next billing. And then we will move up to these rates after that, split the September first billing. Seven twenty-two a thousand residential, sewer stays the same, commercial, nine ninety-nine per thousand, sewer stays the same, these are town rates. This is a fifteen and a half percent increase across the board, village residents also, we'll see this increase. Go from four fifty-four to five twenty-five a thousand. Commercial rates, same, four fifty-four to five twenty-five. And then the aforementioned town rates of seven twenty-two and nine ninety-nine. It's unfortunate. But it's necessary to meet our obligations on this one. Hopefully we can get something worked up. I'm not gonna, not gonna heighten anything here, but hopefully we can get something worked out with E F C. But we'll see how that phone conversation goes when I talk to them this week. So, any motion?
I make.
To raise these rates?
I make a motion that we raise the rates, um, as mentioned on this spreadsheet, do you want me to give the rates or?
Uh, no, it's, they don't, they, yeah, just read the residential and the commercial, you do the record, please.
Okay, um, I make a motion that we raise the residential, uh, rate from four fifty-four K G L to five twenty-five K C L. Commercial from four fifty-four to five twenty-five.
That's in the village.
In the village, and rates to be charged to the town, um, six twenty-five, uh, this is residential to seven twenty-two. And commercial from eight sixty-five to nine ninety-nine.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. And this is a fifteen and a half percent across the board, both the town and the village. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Maren.
Aye. Uh, youth program, we've, uh, I mentioned in my report, we will start developing the, uh, the field at the old elementary school. Normally he mows that, he said he has a contractor comes in and mows it, he'll just have the contractor drop his blade down another a little bit. And, and make it a little finer, we still will have to go out and put bases in, uh, work on the pitcher's mound a little bit. And have we heard from else's point about all of this stuff, the bases and things?
Jan said that she has nothing extra, that we'll have to purchase that.
Did you grow stairs?
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, standing upstairs, there's, there's, uh, there's two first base, the elongated for softball, for girls softball.
Where'd this stuff go though, cause we used to have all that.
We're not sure. That's why I asked her.
There is plenty of catcher's equipment, there's bats, we'll have to buy some balls, uh, there's helmets up there. There's enough equipment for, I would say probably at least two teams, if not three teams. Two baseball, maybe one softball, equipment up there, we may have to purchase some more. All of this stuff that we, the bases and things like that will be charged to the town. Youth program. To be paid for at the end of this, end of the season stuff.
So I don't know if we, we still have our three hundred dollars from this year if we, um, want to purchase them.
Well, we'll go to play it again and price them and see what we can get for what's available.
That's, yeah, but, yeah. My concern still is that that field gets assigned to be used.
Yes.
I haven't been guaranteed that yet.
Well, it's a whole new era now.
Jan Latrano organizes the, uh, the baseball, softball, T-ball youth program. So it needs to be put into the, the list of fields to be used and assigned. And.
After assign a team to that field.
We need to verify that that is going to happen.
Yes. Before we go out and get a lot of equipment.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Was there resistance to using it, is that why?
Well, I, I don't know if there was resistance, I don't wanna say resistance, but, um, it, it was just the comment that I don't know if the coaches will wanna come to Champlain. That worried me a bit. And I don't know that she says, where do you wanna play, or if she says, okay, you know, Joe, whatever, you're assigned to the, the field in Champlain. I don't know how she does it. It's not a cross-country trek here, we're talking four, five miles. Well, I know, and we all understand that.
So before when it was there, it was just you would get a schedule at the beginning of the season where your games were going to be played. And they were scheduled at the three locations, so, well, four, cause you went to Shazee too, you'd go to Shazee Park, or you'd go to Moore's and be eaten alive. Or you'd go to Champlain Elementary School.
Hillary.
You know, so that schedule's there, we're all paying for this service, so it's to be equitable for all the children to be able to participate.
Oh, I totally agree with you, and I, and I think we're all on that page, but because we lost our elementary school and our playing fields, it's been assigned only to Rouse's Point. So those people got used to only going to Rouse's Point, so I'm hoping she's just putting this in as it used to be. But I can't guarantee that, and I don't have the answer to that yet, so before we go buy anything, I think we need an answer to that.
When would she be able to have an answer to us?
Hopefully soon as I can hear.
I'll, I'll try to reach her tomorrow.
Cause the T-ball and everything starts the first of June.
Yeah, it's coming.
I know. And parents are asking where their kids are going to be playing.
Parents are also asking when it starts.
As they should be. I'll, I'll get an answer.
All right, so, but don't we pay portion of her salary to coordinate between all the municipalities?
Once all the town rec programs, yes.
Well, it's, I think we've talked about this in the past where.
Yes.
I know.
Where there was some expectation that the village of Champlain and the town of Champlain was going to pick up some of the maintenance cost and we just, both the town and this village said, no, we're not gonna pay that.
Well, right, and as it is, based on particip- participation, we should actually reduce what we're paying. And if we're gonna get pushed back to letting our kids play within our own, then we should really push for what our equitable amount should be. Our appropriate level of funding for the participation of our children and community.
Seventeen percent, right?
Seventeen percent.
Yes. Instead of thirty.
Thirty-three percent.
Right. It's a big difference, I mean, we do. Because this is important to us and supporting it, we, we've done that, um, but if this is the level that we're not going to work together, then.
Well, I.
Well, let's see what comes up.
I'll let you know as soon as I hear something.
Thirty.
More depth further.
May, may, may.
May twenty-ninth. Or May, whatever month, you know, they just fly by, just remind me.
Okay, landing testing, uh. We received a report, the report showed, as we, as I explained, that there are three areas here in the, in the village building that needs attention, uh, there's still some issues down in the cellar, but the primary one is outside the door here. Uh, Atlantic testing, this report was passed on to D E C. And was passed on from there to this, uh, controller's office, slated with this control fund, spill fund. So that will be part of the discussion tomorrow. What the expectations are, what our, what our obligations are to remedy this situation. And then, uh, we'll go to plan with the spill fund lady, office, uh, the controller's office and D E C. And see where it goes from there. Potentially this could be very expensive and something which the village could not afford to go into. It's just that simple and, you know, we, it's, we're talking a large bill potentially, so. All right. Any other new business?
No, but I do have a question, so when you did talk to, um, the owner of Champlain Elementary School, did he give you any update on what's happening or maybe?
They're working, they've been working there.
You see, there's piles of debris out there.
Well, I saw some bricks out front, so they are moving forward?
I guess.
I think so.
That's exciting.
He called me and he indicated that he wants to move forward with the apartments, but he has to go through the whole zoning process again.
Cause it's been so long?
Yeah. The work they're doing now, they're just cleaning up some walls that were left from the last time they were in there. His men or whoever he works with had a little bit of time off, so they were just in there demolishing or moving some walls, that's what that brick stuff is. But that's all they're doing right now.
Yeah, we had a discussion on our walk last night, I said, no, that's a new pile there, honey, well, maybe, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I don't recall, I mean.
No, they did that a few weeks ago.
You're not, no, not on that block.
So I'm just curious to see if he was more receptive to giving over that side of the land that has the tennis course to turn it into pickleball, I'd write a nice grant and get that fixed up and cleaned up and it would be a nice addition to.
I'm not sure if he's at that point or not, we can.
Baby steps, Amy.
We can see.
Baby steps.
We can see. I mean, let us use it, I mean, we would supply the necessary insurance from, from our angle. And may even help out with the rehabilitation of that cord.
Right.
I mean, it's still in pretty good shape, you know, but. All right, there's no more, no further?
I got something before you, a couple more things. Uh, one is, one is I need a new sewer jet hose, I'm working on it right now, uh. I've got a quote coming in, I talked to the guy tonight, he's sending it to me, but he gave me a verbal quote, and you're looking at a hose for a jetter is about twenty-five hundred bucks. The last one we bought in nineteen ninety-six, it was fourteen hundred and forty dollars when they bought it, so I'll, I'll have quotes probably by tomorrow. Um, and grease now, a grease cutter and some other stuff, but I wanted, I just wanted to mention that. Also, we should think about buying, I looked some up online, but we should think about getting some new flags, we're gonna put flags up here for, um, another week. I found some two hundred and ten Denier Oxford nylon, they're like nine dollars and fifteen cents a piece. I gotta see, I gotta go around and see how many poles and spinners we have, so I don't know if that's a, if that's an option. I gotta see, I gotta go around and see how many poles and spinners we have, so I don't know if that's a, if that's an option. But I wanted to bring that up, we need, we don't, the ones we had are, they stay out all season, and we don't have any, we don't have any that are decent. So if we're gonna put them out, we need to get some.
Yep.
I suggested approve up to, because he's not sure if he has twelve or if he has more.
I gotta see what we've got.
Approve up to spend a hundred and fifty dollars so we can get them ordered and out before Memorial Day.
Okay. Why do you look at me when it comes to money, just glare at me, come on, Amy, just, just do it.
You, you, you should look at what you have left to and see for LED bulbs for switch lights and those Christmas lights, or we do if there's any.
Let's, let's do that later.
Anything, well, no, I know, I was saying, you need to think about it for.
I'm like, we're having it for Christmas, Memorial Day.
Yeah, Christmas in July, right?
Having Christmas lights.
Um.
Do you wanna motion to uh.
Yes, please.
To purchase flags up to a hundred and fifty dollars?
Second.
I still moved that motion.
It's just if we need to do it now if we're gonna get them for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I forgot.
And do we really wanna keep them up all summer, I mean, I mean, is this something that?
I feel that that is.
It looks nice.
I really like it.
Yeah.
We, we've driven through other communities, and you drive through and you see the American flag flying on both sides of the, the road, and it just looks so nice.
Yeah. Yes, I did, um, Woodman's supposed to, I sent him an email today, he's supposed to get us a new P O W and a new American um, flag for the park.
You gotta, I gotta take the old ones to the Legion for retirement, or?
Usually they take them, yeah, what do you, about the last ones, I still got, I still got a few more here.
They take them to Rose's Point. And they'll, they'll probably destroy them until you're at their ceremony.
Yeah. I wonder if, I don't remember where he took them, was it Legion or?
What, last time? I gave them back to.
There's still some, there was still some here, but what do you have?
Well, we switched about last time, I gave them back, I gave them, when Tim brought me the new ones, I gave him the old one.